Thank you, I have a motion to adopt the agenda presented by the second. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that takes us to our next item on the agenda, the school report with the superintendent. You hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Well greetings from our CPS family. We have made it past the first quarter mark. Despite monumental challenges, I am happy to report that overall, I could not be more proud of our amazing school system. The first 90 period has been truly a very complex learning experience for all involved. Students, parents, teachers, staff are finding innovative solutions to problems never encountered before. What is still prevalent that all should be aware of, however, is the persistent immense pressure, stress, and anxiety that has become part of the local, national, and local landscape this year. Thus, our CPS staff have been working diligently to come up with new ways to support students, teachers, and families through establishing positive systems of support. To help students and families with the challenges of distance learning, we have established Saturday study hall, uncovered supervised time for students to complete work while making use of high-speed internet. This week begins Wednesday school for students needing additional help completing assignments or who are in need of academic supports. Wednesday school will occur every week from here until winter break, where teachers and staff will provide individualized assistance to small groups of students in all grades and subjects to help close the distance learning divide and some of the achievement gaps that we have now identified. Strict physical distancing guidelines and additional deep cleaning measures will be taken to ensure we follow our reopening plan mitigation strategies closely. For those still needing support, we plan to have a winter intercession during winter break to especially support high school students needing credit for graduation. Very similar to the summer project graduation program we currently run every summer. Our CPS staff are also working on a virtual parent support center to help parents continue to navigate this drastically different learning environment. The idea was brought up by parents during the Title I advisory meeting, and we are happy to explore this additional support system. We are pleased to announce that the USDA has approved the free lunch program waiver extending the program through the end of the 2021 school year. Our CPS is so fortunate to have such amazing undercover superheroes like those working in our cafeterias and food service department who have been preparing, packing, and delivering meals to students learning at home since March. Their dedication and resolve to ensure that no child in Raph goes hungry has been inspiring to see. The RCHS Agriculture Academy has been off to a wonderful start. Advisor Michelle Fischman has already brought her students to various sites, including Rose Hill, where they were able to examine horse teeth and clean horse hooves as part of a hands-on workshop led by Dr. Tom Massey. The Ag Academy has resurrected the Rappahannock County Future Farmers of America Program, FFA, and just announced its first slate of officers. All female, I might add, led by Chapter President Olivia Gibson. We are so proud of this new program as new officers embark on their first year fundraising task. For more information about supporting our agriculture academy, please reach out to Michelle Fischman at RCHS. The Virginia High School League just released guidance on what the condensed seasons of sports play will look like beginning in December. The Virginia Department of Health also released guidance for school considerations for recreational sports. Athletic Director Courtney Atkins will be providing a full update at next week's school board meeting regarding this new guidance. The last two weeks at both schools were festively spirited as students celebrated school spirit, unity, and kindness as part of the bullying prevention and awareness program. The visually compelling expression of solidarity on Unity Day, where students and staff wear orange, is a message our CPS sends every year to show our firm commitment and belief that no child should ever experience bullying. Other celebrated spirit days were Teen Kindness, where you wear your favorite pantawear or sports jersey powered by kindness, dress as your favorite superhero, Dream of Being Kind, our favorite pajama day, Crazy About Kindness, Crazy Hair Clothes Socks Day, and Character Counts, dress as your favorite book character. These spirit days were such a welcome, positive experience, given the difficulties that always arise after dealing with a COVID case that comes close to home. I am happy to report that our second case of COVID was well-contained by following our strict reopening mitigation procedures and working with BDH, and the quarantine period expired last Friday, at the time of last exposure, possible exposure, with no additional cases reported. This is exactly the way our plan has been designed to work, and in both cases, schools didn't have to close. Your little school system that could has been nationally recognized and is currently listed on the United States Department of Education website as a reopening school success story. In fact, pictures of Assistant Secretary Frank Brokaw's visit to our CPS is featured on the main page. Although this new educational landscape makes it difficult to know or feel whether or not we are succeeding in challenging times, this kind of reassurance and support from national and state leaders certainly helps motivate us to work that much harder to provide what is needed for our students and families. Thank you, as our esteemed local leaders, for being so supportive of the school reopening plan and working with us to ensure our families and teachers have what they need to get this year started under such stringent conditions. We cannot do without, with what we do without that support, so thank you so much. Do you have any questions for me?
I just wanted to say how very commendable it is that your staff moves with such agility and having been on-site and seeing the quarantine rooms that you have set up and all the measures that you have in place to address situations as they arise. As a parent, I can just tell you, it instills me with a lot of faith in your system. And he enjoys going and I enjoy sending him, so that means a lot right now, and so thank you so much for that. On that note, I should say, as the chairman of this body, I do feel like I need to say the same rules apply here in this courtroom as they do in the rest of Virginia in regards to the executive orders of the governor. And so if you are an individual that should be wearing a mask, we do have masks available in the back of the room where the agendas are. And thank you for reminding me of that in your comments as well.
I do have one question. First of all, thank you for all you're doing. You're obviously very trying time, and you keep a smile on your face that I can see through your mask. I am wondering, with the recognition that many of the students were having difficulties that we saw through social media, how much of that do you believe was actually a technology issue versus a how or teaching issue?
Oh, absolutely. I think it's a, just a conglomeration of the landscape we are in, and it is not unique to what we're experiencing. We're one of the first ones to go through it because we had opened so early, so we're the ones sort of leading the way. It is unfortunate that, you know, an internal discussion of grading practices and internal controls and things on that was, you know, brought out without the larger context of that, because the whole conversation is about, you know, in the way with the work that we know is being hung up or not turned in for whatever reason, then yes, this is what would be a percentage of kids who would fail a single class, who are not typical children. So that was the internal conversation that generated, how are we going to adapt to these grading practices? So I'm very pleased to say that teachers have been so great and innovative at coming up with ways, some of these that I've read today about are ways that we will support families and help. But the broadband issue and digital divide is huge, and that's what we're finding is we're having issues even with those who do have some internet, if it's latent at all with those systems, it'll appear that work is being turned in and then get hung up a little bit. We're finding other small glitches as we go through, and as a parent of three young ones, it's really neat to have that perspective because I see it on the other side too. So each one of mine have experienced certain challenges that way too. But we are working through it, and everyone has been very generous and compassionate and innovative, and they're finding great ways to overcome that. And the kids are doing great, by the way. They're not, it's a typical curve now, it's just, you know, we have had to adapt and basically roll grading books a little bit further open, just to give additional time to make sure we can hone in on what the real issues are.
That's great.
Do you think there's any concerns as the weather gets colder, that some of the hotspots are outside? Is that going to impact children's ability to do their work at all?
It could, so that's why we're asking all the post sites that have them to make sure that our tech folks are aware of any issues that they're experiencing. We do regular tech checks on those as well, and then we gave every family that has devices and hotspots and things our own technical support number. So we can respond quickly to that as well.
That was, it's a good question. I was gonna ask a related question. Have you been able to determine how many people are using the hotspots?
We have sent out surveys to that effect, and there are some that are being used more than others. And we also sent out a notification just recently that, please let us know if there's an issue. Because sometimes we'll just try, oh, that one doesn't work, and they go to another one. But we do have, I think the last count was 26 in this small county, and it covers every single area of the county.
Would you mind just giving a quick update on the capital projects that were supported in part with CARES Act?
Absolutely.
I know that's a substantial amount of money, and sure taxpayers would like to know what the status.
Sure. So part of the big capital improvement, well, there's two areas that we've used CARES to combine. The county CARES Act fund went toward revamping our auditoriums so we could put lecture seating in, and should we bring in more children, we have more capacity to be able to distance appropriately to be able to provide that instruction. All the seats are out, the tile is down, I know we were up in the, not me personally, but the people who do that way, up in the ceiling tiles, putting new moisture-resistant tiles up, and it's looking really great. So that should wrap up here by mid-December altogether, so that'll be great help. The other was through the CRF funds that were received from the governor's set aside that you threw. And we are upgrading our HVAC to include UV decontamination systems and air scrubbers for all classrooms. So in all public areas that have air circulation systems, which is a huge deal because that's not something, it's what every school really dreams of for any time that you have, you know, congregating students together. But this is an opportunity to do that, and it'll keep the air cleaner for years to come.
Thanks a lot.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Thanks for being here.
You're doing really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Brinsley.
That takes us to the next item on the agenda, the public comment period. Certainly may have quite a few people that want to publicly comment today, so I'd like to show up hands to get a rough down of people who are public comment, please. And we've got really do about half an hour for public comment for the rules of this body, so if you keep your comments to two to three minutes, you should be in good shape. If you could direct your comments to the board, identify yourself by name and the district that you're from in the course of your comments. For the record, you should be all set. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Yeah, Miss Ritter.
Hi, I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm from the Wakefield District, represented by very competent Ms. Donahue. I wanted to address the issue pertaining to Mr. Curry. And I wanted to start by saying law, there's such a thing as harmless error. And that's when an error has no effect on the outcome of the case. And in this case, despite Mr. Curry's mistake, the board supervisors had the opportunity to hear at length from Mr. Conick, who is Chair of the Planning Commission. And they will have another opportunity to hear from the entire planning commission tonight when they have the opportunity to expound on the comprehensive plan. The second thing is, Rappahannock spent a long time trying to find a competent county administrator. And it is our great fortune to have found Mr. Curry. He is a consummate professional. He is unbiased, he gives good advice, he spends countless hours of service to the county. He has extensive knowledge of county administration, the pertinent Virginia Code sections, the zoning ordinances, and the county code. So when you think about, you know, the best interest of this county, then it would certainly be to keep somebody who is a first-class county administrator. The question then, if it's harmless error, and you have a first-class county administrator who goes above and beyond the requirements of his job, time after time, and gives good, non-biased advice to anybody who needs it, why would you want to bring up a question of whether or not he should be demoted or have a salary cut, it seems to me? Or I fear that there's a personal animus that is motivating that decision and not the best interest of the county. And I hope that you will take the best interest of the county, which would be to give Mr. Curry a raise rather than a demotion. When you consider, when you go into closed session, consider your personnel matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Mr. Sarno?
I am Gina Sarno from the Hampton District, and I'm not really here to criticize anyone. I do want, however, to praise Mr. Curry. I first interacted with Mr. Curry when he was a judge for the all-important Christmas in Home Washington. In true Curry style, he took a picture of every float and had chalk. I'm not a writer, I'm just a theorist. I have served with Mr. Curry on the library board, and we often have, I'll call it butted heads on certain issues. He is always so well-prepared, and what I really dislike is that he's most often right. I think it's really hard to have five offices when there is only one employee. I suggest one more thing. Let's show respect for our one employee who I think has done an excellent job. Not try to destroy his morale, and perhaps some training on management is important. This could have easily been a discussion if there are more, if there are two members of the committee, the board supervisors, who could have sat down with them and sort of walked through what happened. This did not have to be done in a public way that really, I think, was meant to call into question his reputation. I hope his morale is intact. I think there are many supporters here, and we salute you. Thank you very much.
Can I just get a show of hands about how many people are here for this particular item on the agenda? Could I just make a statement in the interest of possibly helping along with this public comment period? Because I feel like there's been some misinformation in the press, or some information that hasn't been clearly understood. And I don't like to take over public comment, but if we're going to hear public comment, I want it very much to be based on facts. And the fact of the matter is, when I asked for a closed session, I specifically asked for a closed session not in regards to any individual officer in our government. I asked for a closed session in regards to non-performance FOIA duties by employees. It was not intended to hurt anyone. It was intended to make sure a job got done. It was about processes. It was about making sure things are done right. It was not about personalities, and it was not about people. It was about personnel. I was told by our FOIA officer, who also happens to be our county administrator, that the way I wanted to call the closed session was not correct. And so I went by his wording as to how I needed to call the closed session. It wasn't exactly what I was going for, but as our FOIA officer, I took his advice. It did not set well with me that people misunderstood my intentions. And so when we go into closed session today, I consulted with Alan Garenhardt, who is the FOIA counsel for the state of Virginia, and I will use his approved wording on this matter to go into closed session today. Because I am not targeting employees, but I am responsible if things aren't done correctly. This board is done responsible responsible if things aren't done correctly. And I don't work as an individual, I work as a member of this board. And when there are decisions to be made, I want to talk to my peers. And that's all I have to say. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Mr. Deakins?
Dick Deakins, Hampton District. With all due respects to Mr. Curry and the administration, I'm appalled and offended that this issue got into the press. I think Ms. Smith was doing her pointed duties, called for a personnel review. It's none of our business how that works out, that's a board's decision. I want to publicly chastise the three supervisors and perhaps the county administration to leak this and have this, I have to hear about this in a newspaper. I just want to voice my total devotion to support to Ms. Smith and the effort that she's put out for this county, and we're under good stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deakins. Anyone else?
Gary Atral, Hampton District. I appreciate the comments the chair just made, it helps clarify some things in my mind. However, the damage to Mr. Curry is done. And I come to date publicly to support your county administrator, our county administrator, you employee who works for us, the taxpayer, citizens of this county. I've been impressed by his confidence and his professionalism these past few years, and frankly, having watched this board, not this board, but the Board of Supervisors of this county over the last seven years, there have been moments when I wondered how anyone who's competent or professional could work for this county. We have been blessed to have Mr. Curry here since he's come. He's helped us move into the 21st century. Some of you know, I attended the University of Virginia Law School, I practiced law as a member of the State Bar, and then I went back to PhD in political science, and I've taught both public administration and state and local government at the university level. I'm telling you that he is one of the most competent public administrators I've ever had the pleasure of observing or working with. And so while there's no blame, perhaps, the consequence of the past week has been to call into question in some people's minds who may not follow public life with this government as closely as I do, whether or not he's the right person. I want to go on the record as saying, without reservation, he's the right person right now for this family, especially during this period of COVID. And you can look at his record, you don't have to take, you don't need my words in this, you know what's been going on day by day, week by week, month by month, for the last nine months better than any of us. And I appreciate your service. And I know that there must have been a must-understanding, because as I've watched this board work, I know how much you appreciate his service. I'm amazed during public meetings, when you ask for a number, or you ask for five, or you ask for anything, you get exactly what this board deserves, which is almost spontaneous, accurate reply. For you and for those who are sitting out here listening, you don't agree. Not something this county has always enjoyed. And so I just want to add my voice to those who thank you for your service, and I want to thank Mr. Curry for his service. Because going forward, it's not going to be easy. We're not out of these woods yet. But I think we're making some progress, and I was especially impressed with the meeting on the CARES Act at the school. It was as high a level of cooperation and collaboration by all the members of the board and your administrator as I've witnessed in seven years of attending public meetings. So I regret sort of this hitch of the past week, but I hope we can all get past it and just continue to thank you for your good service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atral.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, come back.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, Supervisors. I come from the Wakefield District and have lived here for 40 years. We have been through a very unhappy patch politically in the last decade. And we were in high hopes, as citizens and taxpayers, that we were on a new road. I think that the issue before you all is a subject of governance. And the time has come for the Board of Supervisors to withdraw and spend some time talking about the relationship that should exist between the Board of Supervisors and the county manager. Most of us believed that we needed to have a professional person in this office. Someone that we could count on to stick with. Now, when it comes to governance, there is, it's a two-sided proposition. There's the Board of Supervisors on one side, who act in effect like public trustees. And the other side is a paid CEO. There are specific duties for the CEO. And the board needs to spell out so that no county manager, Mr. Curry, and those who follow after him are under any illusions about what is expected and on what basis they will be judged. That performance ought not to be a matter that comes up more than once a year unless there is a clear case of malpractice. No county government is going to be able to do its duty unless it knows the distinction between what is the paid CEO's role and what is the role of the Board of Trustees in effect. There are, in the world of nonprofits, some very successful reforms that you might well look at. For example, it's always important to be sure each year that you know what the other part of the team has as its objectives, and that the county manager knows what specifically is expected of him or her. One device that has been used very successfully is that the Chair of the Board has a meeting with the paid CEO, and they critique one another in front of the rest of the board.
Are you about wrapped up because there were quite a few people that wished to speak, so I'm just trying to keep us on schedule.
I'm sure you'd like me to stop.
If you could speak your name for the record too, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Teresa.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Teresa Wood, Michigan District. Thank you for explaining your position with the article that came out in the newspaper. It's certainly helpful. But I did get showered and dressed, and I'm out of the house today, which is like a red patient. So I'm going to take the opportunity to go ahead and say thank you. Thank you to the board. You all do a great job. You don't get paid enough to do what you do. And also, in my busy world, I don't say thank you enough, I know. Our knowledge, the work that you do, since I'm here, I'm showered, I'm dressed, so I'd just like to say thank you. And acknowledge you, Mr. Curry, as well, outside of what was in the newspaper. was in the newspaper, you have been most helpful to businesses of Rappahannock, the businesses of Rappahannock, and to me as a resident. And so I'd just like to say thank you and acknowledge you all.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Mr. Summers.
Thank you. Todd Summers from Piedmont District, the chief of Sperryville Rescue and also a long secretary member of your broadband committee. First, thanks for announcing Kim Kilby, she was a real leader in the community. Second, echo the comments and support of Gary, he's been a real friend to us, so we appreciate that. Third, support your decision on the broadband authority. Just point out two changes we need. One is the 80-foot pole allowance in the zoning board, says wooden poles, that's a really big tree, so suggests that language be corrected so that it may be a pole as possible, doesn't have to be wood. You can pick your favorite color, I think the board has one. And then also, RF meters would allow us to feed high-speed broadband to the towers. There's a lot of restrictions in the current zoning about size of the tower, so we need something that would allow one meter or less for the RF, because in a lot of places in the county we don't have fiber to feed the cables. So for cellular or broadband, we need that. So those are two changes that we need that you could do right away, and I think that would make us receptive to some of the private entities that want to come into the county, including Gentile and others. And lastly, just wanted to recognize your comments and conversation on EMS capacity and fire capacity. It's easy to say we're at the end of our ropes. It's been a very stressful period, we lost a lot of people due to COVID risk, so we're operating with very few people, still trying to maintain high-quality, 24-hour days, seven-day a week coverage with a skeleton crew. And it's the pressure of getting to the point, it's kind of unbearable. So I think we may be in for some short-term solutions, just getting some paid people in to just offset, maybe a medium-term solution, which is a chase rookie, and then a long-term solution that maybe look a little bit more advanced for the county. So I'd urge you to think in those different phases. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Summers, I appreciate the comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Barski.
My name is Joaquin Barski and I live in Hampton District. Since my husband could not be here, I speak for my husband as well, since he is compelled to be at the poll watchers certification meeting, like around now. The articles that appeared on the local newspapers made us rethink what the news media and the reporters are all about. There should never have been a story, it is each member, this board is a prerogative to add an item on the agenda of meeting. The chairman of the board asked the closed session to be added on today's meeting, the agenda to discuss personnel matter on a county employee. The details are to be discussed at the closed meeting among the supervisors, not with newspaper reporters, especially before the meeting takes place. Now, the county seems to be divided into a group in support of the county administrator, as I have heard, against another in support of the board chairman. There's absolutely no basis for this divide because the discussions have not taken place. We strongly support and praise both, both of you. It saddens and angers us to know three supervisors could not say, no comment, this is a personnel issue we have not met yet, when they are contacted by the press. We believe that they owe a big apology to the Madam Chairman Smith and the residents of Rappahannock County. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. If there's no applause, please, I should have mentioned that earlier, but this is part of the meeting long. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, I think that's Mr. Rappel behind that mask.
I've got some information here for y'all. Follow along. Yeah, I'm Ron Matla from Jackson District, and I wanted to take a couple minutes here and talk to you about the item you've got coming up on the agenda involving the Chester Gap funding. I did some homework on this, and I'll go through it real quick. The first thing I'm going to deal with here is the funding from 2019, 2020. The fire levy funding from Rappahannock, this is for Chester Gap. They got $67,200 in fire levy funding. Then you gave them, out of the CARES funding, you gave them another $30,700, actually it's a total of $97,900 to Chester Gap. They also get additional funding from Warren County where they also provide service, and that is, I got this from Warren County Fire Administration, but basically they got $64,000 plus dollars in the same period in Warren County. Total calls they ran, 181 calls, that's in both counties. Calls in Rappahannock were 89, calls in Warren were 92, so 51% of the calls that Chester Gap ran were in Warren County. If you take the $97,900 and divide it by the number, divide it by the 89 calls that they ran in Rappahannock, it costs us $1,100 for each one of those calls. And if you take the 51% of the 92 calls, 51%, if you take 51% of that $97,900, well basically we paid $49,929 for type of Warren County. I then looked at Washington and Amesville, I combined their funding totals as a comparison. So the combined total for Washington and Amesville was $101,400. CARES funding, they got nothing. So their total funding is $101,400. The total calls combined with Washington and Amesville, so in Rappahannock was $349. You do the math, the average cost per call with those two companies is $290. Way different from $1,100. Now, in reading the memorandum, there's a number of items, and I spoke to Warren Fire Administration about this also, and we were kind of in agreement on these things. My first question is, why is Rappahannock County negotiating a memorandum of agreement for a privately-owned 501(c)(3) corporation? Chester Gap should be the ones that are standing up and asking for that money. You should not be going into Warren County and negotiating for a private corporation. And also, and I want to say something else, is that I'm talking about money here, not the dedication and the service that's provided by these people. That was my career, but you've got to look at the money at times. So moving on here, in regards to the people that are being hired and they are already working up there, do we know the required qualifications for the position, and who is in charge of ensuring that they're met? Another question is, who's paying for workers' comp insurance? Next question, is there medical malpractice insurance in place, who pays for it? These are paid employees, the Good Samaritan laws don't apply, you are subject to malpractice if in fact you do not perform your duty in a prescribed manner. And then another question is, which county covers what?
I really hate to interrupt you, but I did impose a shorter time limit than normal today, if you could wrap your comments up, that would be great.
Okay.
We have it in writing, you can look it up.
You have it in writing, okay. Last comment then is, if people are injured in Warren County, whose insurance, there's a lot of questions on that, pay the money. And my last thing is, when your six other fire companies come up and ask for that money next month, are you going to be able to give it to them also? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matla. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Madam Chair, if I could interject for a second?
Yes, Mr. Fraser.
Just for the record, because I know how my memory works, could we, could I ask Mr. Curry if we could go over his numbers later on and make sure that, whether they're correct or not?
That's your question. And I don't have to...
No, I'm not asking you now, sir. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record somewhere, that we can check up on it later.
And I think this is an agenda item for later, so we could maybe leave it some later today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
John Sullivan, Hampton District. I'd like to make an observation, several observations. One, as everybody knows, folks have been distraught over the years by how much sort of interesting work here with some of the different county administrators and that. And it strikes me that this new group and Mr. Curry have so far worked together pretty well. And that's what you hear all the time. Here's a group that's sort of trying to pull it together. Second point is, I think most people think Gary Curry's done a great job. I'm sure there's some exceptions, but most people think he's done a good job, but this sort of becomes he's done a good job or not a good job. If I may observe and take it critically as you meant, as I understand, having read the newspaper, read all the email traffic, read all the stuff on Rappahannock, it was perceived, correctly or incorrectly, that the board chairman, chairperson, wanted to have a private session to discuss Mr. Curry. Obviously, the board can hire and fire Curry any day of the week, it's your responsibility. If he's doing an inadequate job, then fire him. Well, I don't think people think he's done it. And I think what happened here, this is an observation, I'm not trying to dumb one at you, is it was perceived by people that you all were thinking of going into a private discussion, which is appropriate, to talk about the county administrator, which is appropriate, about the fact that he or his staff missed a deadline for sending out a meeting notice, for which he apologized, got on his hands and knees and apologized.
Please direct your comments to the board members.
I apologized, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Just in case you didn't hear what I said, because I turned my face here. He was criticized because he didn't send out a notice. Now, we want to follow the laws. I'm not a lawbreaker, but I don't think that was like a high crime. He apologized for it. He stuck this thing in his chest and said, I did it. He said, I'll never do it again. So what is there to discuss? And why did it have to become this kind of issue when all anyone could do, any one of you, was just, Gary, don't do that again. I mean, you fucked, you messed up. You may be messed up, don't do it again. But no, it's become this thing where everybody's all spat at each other. Sorry, I looked at them. Everybody's all spat at each other. So I just think it's something to be handled a little bit differently. And so that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Wood. No, I'm sorry.
My name's Al Fuddin, I live up in Huntley. I've lived in the county for 40 years. My family has lived in Virginia for some 200 years, if that matters. When I first moved to the county, the rumor was that the Board of Supervisors met behind a big tree at the corner of such and such, and decided what the agenda was going to be and how it was going to vote. Thank God, we've gone beyond that. So now we're trying to be pulled kicking and screaming into the 21st century. And we do that in the midst of a country which is fraught with, I'm for this side, I'm for that side, we can't talk civilly to each other. And here in Rappahannock, I hope we've gotten above that, not beyond it, but above that. I applaud the move of this board, and the previous boards, but this board in particular, to move into the 21st century. And that's very difficult in this county, because we do not have a lot of resources. And we have to hire expertise in areas that we are not familiar with. Mr. Curry comes on board, I do not know him personally, but what he's done for the county, I mean, all you have to do is go to the landfill. That's where I go. When I was a lad, I grew up on a farm in Connecticut, and we had to set posts, we didn't have a lot of equipment. What we had was a tractor and a tip cart with a post in it, a chromblock to make a hole, and then I had to get up in the tip cart with a maul that was something like that, lift it up over my head, my stepfather was holding on to the post, brave man, and I had to hit the post into the ground, sink it into the ground. For relaxation, he'd find a fly and try to put it up in the post, and I'd try to hit the fly. It didn't work very well. But I think that's what we have here. We have a mountain and a mole there. And maybe it's unfortunate that it gets into the paper, but that's the way I learn my news, not so much from Facebook. So I would just plead for not only civility and expertise, but work together. We're one county, we're one nation. We have a lot riding on our future, and to fuss around with insignificant flies to be squished seems stupid and pointless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Butler.
My name is Carolyn Butler, I live in Sperryville, Piedmont District. I'm authorized also to speak for Helen Johnson, who lives in self-quarantine due to COVID. I support my supervisor, who was elected by majority vote in Piedmont District. I attended church yesterday with Christine. I note she has no ill intentions towards anyone. She is a fine Christian person, she's dedicated to this job and this county. She has many other things that she could spend her time on, including her two children, her husband, her mother. Christine, as chairman of the board, has the duty and the obligation under state code to review personnel in closed meetings. That means anyone that was hired by the board. It was unethical for anyone to leak misinformation to the press before or after, as we know, a closed meeting. So I would appreciate it if you would, the rest of the board, would follow Christine's lead. You all elected her to be chairman, and that is her position. There's no ill feelings towards anyone, but I do have a strong opinion about this. I know Christine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. And please say Miss Johnson as well. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Dan Lannigan, and I live in Hampton District. I'm speaking this afternoon on behalf of myself and my wife, Kit Coldfark. We would like to express our strong support for Gary Curry, not just in this instance, but for all the contributions he's made to Rappahannock County, contributions that have benefited all of us. I'd also like to commend our supervisor, Pierre Whitmore, along with supervisors Debbie Donahue and Chris Parish, who spoke out in support of Mr. Curry and questioned the need for a closed-door session to discuss... for a closed-door session to discuss, and I quote, what was in the agenda, "County Administrative Performance/Discipline." In contrast to Mr. Curry's insistent exemplary professional conduct, the actions attempted by Chairperson Smith are reprehensible. As reported in the Rappahannock News, she wished to put forward a motion to conduct a closed meeting for the purpose of, and I'm quoting, "the email traffic between Chairman Smith and Mr. Curry, 'performance, demotions, salaries, and disciplining of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body.'" This appears quite blatantly to be undermining the reputation of Mr. Curry. I heard her explanation earlier this meeting that this was not her intention. It all, if so, she needs to be more clear in her future instructions, and because of the damage done to Mr. Curry, I believe that she owes him an apology. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lannigan. Please give my regards to Mr. Goldfarb as well. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes.
Greetings. I'm Robert Yow from Piedmont District. I did send an email to you all, but I will keep it short. I am happy to have Christine Smith as my representative on the Board of Supervisors. I also think that Mr. Curry has done a good job overall. There are good things and there are bad things. One of the things I strive, I strive to do, I'm 25 years old, I'm probably one of the youngest here in this room, is to be a good leader in what I do. And part of that, to me, part of what good leadership is, is if I have a problem with a colleague or a fellow colleague, I don't make the matter public to everybody and bring it out to the paper. I go to that person, I talk to them, and I try and resolve the issue. That's the goal. I don't know who did it, I don't know what caused it, I don't know what, but leaking it out to the paper, making statements to the paper, to me, is bad conduct and bad leadership. I would hope that future situations, that can be rectified. Thank you very much. Thanks a lot.
No class need for time limit through. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Walton and Mr. White.
I'm Jim Manoring from Stone Ball, Hawthorne.
I'm so sorry. I thought you were somewhere else in the mask, and I apologize.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you were someone else behind the mask.
I am someone.
I disidentified you terribly, I'm sorry.
Without the mask on me.
She wants your name better, find out.
I'm Jim Manoring from Stone Ball, Hawthorne District. And I think enough has been said about Mr. Curry's performance. I'm here to support him and just voice my support in any action that's coming up, and that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manoring. I think there was another hand up in that. Yes, Mr. White.
Page Goody Jackson District. Do you want Mr. Curry in support? I support Mr. Curry. He is an excellent administrator, far better than the ones I have criticized in the past. But that's really not the issue. The issue is, he has got employee rights, and those rights should be handled in a closed session. To do it in public was totally inappropriate. That is the issue. All right? Was the announcement done correctly? No, not really. How did that happen? I don't care. All right? The issue is, he's been hurt. The question is, who did the hurt? A lot of people. A lot of people contributed to that. Different issue, in regards to the broadband authority. I am a strict constitutionalist. I am a strict believer that all authority in our form of government in this county is right here at this table. I am against any authority that gives any kind of taxing or spending authority outside of this Board, unless they are elected people, all right? The sewer authority is something different. They have their own income, but in this case, the income is going to come from taxpayers. And I realize you're trying to put other things in there to provide some sort of that protection. My problem is, that's a slippery slope. You start setting this up, and, you know, a couple terms from now, the Board isn't there, it's only a few members, it's not elected, I'm very concerned. I don't think you need the authority. If the grants are, require you to have an authority, let's make a real decision about whether that grant and all its little tentacles that's going to make you do stuff are worth it. Because generally, as someone who kind of administered grants to the federal government, they don't give you money unless they want something. All right? And it's not, so be very, very careful. But again, I'm not...
Which authority are you talking about?
Broadband authority, sorry.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
So I'm generally against that, and that I don't think you need it. I think we're small enough. I also don't think you need a lot of your committees. A lot of the work is to happen right here. I want to emphasize again that the two working sessions you've had have been very productive. The reason why I think they are productive is because you have the experts in the room. The last time was Mr. Conick, and we had the building committee won, all right? That allows people to have a conversation back and forth. This format is not conducive to that. Because we up in, we talk in public comment, and then you go off and you go to different places. So have working sessions, don't have committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, Chief Sturzenberg. Please, just a second. Just being gentle and pulling down. I think it's still...
Careful, careful.
Don't hurt yourself here.
Well, I'm all right.
Yeah, I'm fine. Pardon me.
Hi, Sheila Ressinger, Hampton District. I've been concerned lately about the chaos that seems to have been going on around here lately, and so I've called to mind something I'd studied a while back. Out in the Southwest, there is a little god of mischief and god of chaos, and he's called Copacabana, okay? I think he's sort of been around here, and we have been into just a lot of fussing. I think this current issue is much to do about nothing. However, it's a problem because it did cause, I think, a great deal of embarrassment to Mr. Curry and to his family. And Mr. Curry has just done a phenomenal job. I've talked about it here, I've talked about it in the newspaper. I will tell you, I think part of what could be happening is something that I did find in the newspaper, and it goes, it's part of this comprehensive plan stuff. And it was, Mr. Conick was very unhappy that this notice did not get put in in time. That is miniscule in the whole scope of things. One little itty-bitty thing. Mr. Curry apologized, and then there was an article in the newspaper, I took a screenshot of it, where Mr. Conick wrote about Michelle, "I don't think she gets enough credit for all she does, and a man or woman at the top is only as good as his or her support staff." Continuing, quoting H.L. Munch?
Mankin.
Okay, wait, thank you. "The caveman is all muscle and mush. Without a woman to rule him and think for him, he is a truly lamentable spectacle, a baby with whiskers, a rabbit with the frame of an oar, which is an extinct species of wild cattle in Asia. A feeble..." That was mine. I looked it up. "...a feeble and preposterous caricature of God. Maybe you should print that quotation out and put it up on the inside of your office door," Conick added. In my opinion, that is absolutely an outrageous comment that anyone, any government official would say to an employee, no matter lonely employee, whatever, okay? That's the quirk of the matter. That kind of poison is in here, and I think it's contributing to things that are occurring, and I really don't like it. So what I'm thinking, the good thing is, Mr. Conick won't be in this position for a while after the end of December. And so I'm hoping that we can put this little spectacle of Mr. Copacabana, the god of mischief and chaos, to rest, okay? As far as Christine Smith, I am a little bit disappointed that this whole thing seemed to have blown up in your face. I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt. I do think there are apologies that should be made.
Thank you, Ressinger. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Johnson.
I wasn't prepared to speak, but I just want to say, my name's Dawn Allison, I'm in Piedmont District, and I'm an employee of Rappahannock County, and it has been an honor and privilege to work with both Mr. Curry and Ms. Smith. I think you are wonderful people who, this whole matter is nothing about, so I apologize. I think you two guys deserve an apology from others that may have leaked it, but I think you guys do an exceptional job. I'm proud and honored to work the life of you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, no class. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Bruce.
I am Bruce, Piedmont District. I think Gary Curry might be the best thing, or nearly the best thing, to tap on the Rappahannock County government in the 21st century. It has been said that when he first came here and met with some of his staff, he said, "I am not anybody's friend." And I take that to mean, he was not going to favor you, or you, or you, or anybody else. He was going to, he's a straight Arab, he's going to do his job that way, and if you're not satisfied with what he does, please do not go after him because you don't like what he did. I hope that there is not an attempt in this courtroom to try to drive Mr. Curry out of the county. I'm sure there are plenty of people, other counties, that would love to hire him. Don't give him a reason to go. I support Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, if there's no further discussion or public comment, I would consider the public comment period closed. That takes us on to the consent agenda, which, is there anyone that would like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I will make that motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, at this time, I think it would be appropriate for everyone to read in their statements, preparations for in regards to payment of bills to Walker Jones. Start that off.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-315H, 33015H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, whose firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors that are affected by the transactions, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-315H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors that are affected by the transaction, that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
It's a balance between fog from the mask and glasses. I'm trying my best here. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors.
15H, as a Board of Supervisor member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors that are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
You choose not to declare correct, Mr. Frazier.
Right, he didn't represent me, and I still don't see any proof where he represented this firm.
And with that, I think we have a motion, a second, to adopt the consent agenda as presented under the plea that I...
By my...
Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us on to the presentation of a letter of recognition to Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams is on duty again today, as he so often is, and we will make sure that this letter gets to him, and we do appreciate his ongoing services in the county. The next item is the IMG appointments. Mr. Curry, if you could walk us through this item, please?
...to the resignation of Ms. Ritter, opening that appointment to DCA. The policy that the Board adopted a year or so ago has the process that the Board agreed to follow to bill date the DCA, and that includes an automatic advertisement for the record authority. However, it does provide the Board an opportunity to waive that, if you so choose. I can tell you that I've already received two applications for this meeting. It just came in the last day or so, and I haven't had a chance to put them up to the Board. So I guess I need directions from the Board, whether you're inclined to waive the newspaper ads and consider the applications received, just by word of mouth, apparently, or you'd like me to go ahead?
This is one of those positions that we can't just make an appointment without an advertisement, correct?
Yeah, well, you can do that ready, because it's your policy. You would have to, someone make a motion to waive that portion of your policy. But this appointment needs to be made by resolution according to the local Board of Supervisors.
I'm not sure how the rest of the Board feels disposed in this, but I would be inclined to, if we've already got two people willing to serve, we'll go advertising and keep that money and make the appointment.
Same for you, as well.
Were there any other thoughts on this? Do you have your motion?
I would prefer that, just to be clear.
I would make a motion that we waive advertising for this appointment to the RC RFA, and that we take this business up at the next meeting and make the appointment. Is that clear enough? Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who's first.
Frazier, I'll say.
Frazier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us to building and space needs assessment discussion. I asked Mr. Curry to put this on the agenda. I feel like this has been languishing since our session with Wiley Wilson, and I just wanted to know if there are any discussions in this, or what we needed to do to bring this forward.
It has languished, and the next step was for the consultant to provide that scope of deep proposal. Fortunately, Mr. Vaughn, who was here with us, said, "I had a bit of a personal tragedy, and was out of the office for a period of time." He is now back in the office, and told me he would get that to me shortly.
Okay, very good. And please, given our best, it was a wonderful session when he joined us, provided insight into the process, and I just wasn't, wanted to make sure that there was nothing we needed to be given to move the process forward. That takes us to the next item on the discussion developments regarding augmenting volunteers under old business, item H2. I had put this in as a place marker, or I had asked Mr. Curry to add this to the agenda as a place marker, because all of them have been occurring in the last two weeks, thinking that there might be some developments that we could take action on today. There aren't any that I'm aware of. Mr. Curry, do you have any other background on this?
Just to note that there are two county attorney opinions attached to this item and one other, a couple items down, and I'll go to Chester Camp specifically, this being an old business that they had to make you. But if the Board has a familiar answer... But if the Board has a familiar answer, so the two opinions that were distributed should relate to the fire levy, fire and rescue levy that we have that was adopted years ago, and what it can be used for relative to fire and rescue, which we now call EMS and the code, that involves the use of those levy funds for EMS personnel assets. So there are actions that county attorney records for take on the Board, including cleaning up our ordinance to track the current Code of Virginia, even though we had, when we adopted it in 98, I think, we were right in line, and to that extent, we still follow it, even though the Code of Virginia left us in the past, we should catch up again. And specifically, if funding is to use personnel in specific words, I wish it should be included.
So, a comment. This is probably a little further than what Mr. Benny was thinking about, but I wonder about having, doing away with the fire levy tax, and it all goes into a general fund. I mean, we're dealing with two buckets here, and this is not something I'm proposing. This is something I'm proposing to be thinking about. Would it be more efficient if we had one tax that all went to the same pot, and we took care of what we need to take care of out of that one pot? And I had this long conversation with Mr. Blackwell, and he mentioned the Virginia State Fire Services Board that can give us free advice, and I'm not sure we're taking advantage of that. I'm on the floor here. This also, we, this may be a little bit off the subject, but we are looking for somebody to replace Kevin Williams, and I think it's been decided this is going to be a full-time position. And if we are really going to move forward, and pay EMS, maybe that new employee, that new full-time employee, even though he's technically the emergency services manager, he could also be the centralized commander in chief over the different, you know, departments we have. The individual chiefs, they resent the intrusion, but it could be a way to move things along a lot faster than moving. And so I'm just throwing those out there for, for fellow.
I would just add that I did attend the chiefs meeting a few weeks ago, and it's fair enough, I didn't stay for the whole thing, but I think the chiefs and the association and some of the companies are all working on language and options for us, looking to build consensus. And one of the job descriptions does make the role more of a liaison sort of role between the chiefs, which seemed like that had a lot of agreeable qualities to the chiefs as well.
Ms. Dossinger?
I do believe that two job descriptions have been submitted to Mr. Curry for his review, and he can basically pick and choose what he likes out of it for this new position, and I assume you'll see that in the near future, because I know you want to get this person hired as soon as possible. I do know that the chiefs, Chair Smith, I did ask Chief Brown about whether he and Mr. Summers had gotten far on any agreement for the chiefs, and whether they wanted to meet with us, as you had suggested, and they're not there yet. I think they want another chiefs meeting before they'll be ready to meet with the Board. Also, I know during the fire levy board meeting, I've had members that are slightly frustrated, feeling like we're kind of in the muck and not moving forward with any type of assistance for the rescued folks. And Mr. Stener had recommended that we do a fire and EMS study through, I think, the group that, Virginia Fire Services Board, that Supervisor Parrish has mentioned. What we left the night of the fire levy board meeting, first unite with, was an assignment to the members of the Board to actually go back and read. There was an extensive study done in 2014 that basically, due to some reasons, got put on a shelf instead of really being taken into consideration. I think some items were followed through with, the smaller, easy ones, but it is a very detailed, I don't know how many pages, but it's a lot. And it is now, if someone wants to read that, the fire levy board will be reading it as well as the service level agreement that we have with the association and fire and rescue, and coming back to our next meeting in December to discuss whether it would make sense to do another study, or take what we've already paid for years ago, and try to figure out if that's good enough for us at this point to move slightly forward. As Chief Summers said, I don't think we're going to do anything fast. It's going to be a little bit at a time, and I think that's a good start from the fire levy board's viewpoint.
Thank you, Ms. Dossinger. Any other comments, Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I don't know about that old study. I think it's 2013 now, so it's kind of old and outdated. Mr. Parrish has brought up an interesting solution, maybe to a question that several of us have had, whether or not we can use the fire levy funds for salaries. So at its inception, I remember I came on a board when the first year was actually, you know, sent out in the tax bill. I didn't vote for it, it was already something that was created by the previous board, and what it was for was basically to bring in a set amount of money that could then be divvied up for all the different fire and rescue companies. It may not be necessary anymore, because we're at full funding for operational expenses, so it may not be even necessary anymore. But it is an idea. I just wish I'd thought of it.
Of course, financially, it makes no difference.
I know, right. The taxpayer pays everything.
From the taxpayer's perspective, there may be some comfort down that those pennies that they pay are restricted, and can't go to some other item that they may think is frivolous relative to, you know, important. So if the Board was in mind to raise the tax rate to support something specifically to do with fire EMS, the citizens may be better aligned with that if they know those pennies and dollars can only be used with fire EMS. But that's literally the difference.
That could be handled with some policy statement, I would think. I mean, in the budget, that simply states that no matter what, we will always reimburse 100% of operational expenses, even if it's a blended bucket. You have your budget now, which is your policy statement on what dollars you're going to go where, and you have your fire and rescue EMS services agreement that defines the commitment that you're making to those companies. So those two things together clearly direct what you intended. But as I noted, perception from the citizens may be different, doing it in two different ways.
Well, and I do wonder, since you brought up the fire services agreement, I mean, there's language in these two attachments that needs to be updated. Should we take a motion to start updating that language today?
In the ordinance, I would ask yes, and we already have a draft of that working. I just need to polish it off and bring it to the Board. The agreement is a little bit different, and we can look at that and see if it needs to be changed. Perhaps a second agreement needs to be developed solely for EMS.
Or an amendment or something.
I would make the motion that we move forward with language to reconcile our current ordinances with what's current state code, and have that in order for our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Dossinger. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I assume that you want a draft of that ordinance and the public hearing at your next meeting, and you authorize it to move forward on.
Yeah, let's review it, and then we'll advertise it after we review it.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I would just, are there any other additions to this? I feel like there have been a lot of meetings going on, and I was really hopeful, the Public Safety Committee met last Tuesday. We normally only meet quarterly, but should we need to call a special meeting to advise, you know, our perception of any plan is brought forward, we would certainly do that and send up an opinion. I knew the chiefs were meeting, I was hopeful there might be something out of there. And the fire levy's been meeting regularly on this, and I also know some of the companies have been meeting, and I was hopeful there might be an action item beyond wordsmithing today, but we will keep it at the forefront on the front burner, then be ready to act as soon as something materializes.
So is there any merit to this contact in this Virginia State Fire Services Board?
I think the fire levy board had a pretty long discussion about that, and Ms. Dossinger noted, it was put on the shelf momentarily to review the JLN study, and then come back, hadn't done that homework, and then ask and answer that question again. And so for me, if we were just their staff arm, can apparently come in and perform this study. What I express as my concern is, do we know how they perform the study, or are they performing it one-size-fits-all, and they're going to review us like they would, and then our city department with six-minute response times, and so we need to really know what we're getting into before we open that door.
I do think it is worthwhile to get an outside opinion. I'm just, I'm not sure now is the right time to do it. I think that's the long range, I think, but I do think that there will be a time and length. Perhaps we should reclaim ourselves with the old study. Wait for feedback from the associations for the current situation, and then consider taking on a new study as well.
That old study didn't say a lot.
Well, that was my recollection.
Actually, there's a lot of repeat of what's going on today. Yeah. It's, I read it right before I was elected, because I wanted to understand what was going on, and some of it, you know, it's understandable, the companies didn't like it, because the people that did the study looked at us and said, "Okay, so you need a bunch of affordable housing, and you need a bunch of young people, and then you got your volunteers." And they basically looked at the folks that wrote it and said, "You don't know Rappahanna County," and it went up on a shelf. But I think there's still a lot of good information in there that we are still dealing with today, and decisions that will be needed to be made in the near future.
Well, I wonder if there are incentives that we should be offering as a county, and I know this is a very difficult conversation, and maybe not right now during COVID, but maybe there are incentives we should be offering that would really help attract volunteers. Maybe not now, but in the near future.
I have had a citizen get asked about retention and recruitment, and I don't honestly know where to center, because there are people that want to try to help, but I don't know if that's an association issue, or is that a county issue, or who should lead that charge?
Well, if I remember the fire services agreement correctly, it's our duty as the Board to support in recruitment and retention, but it's individual companies' responsibility to, it's got very strong wording, I want to say.
I believe it's association, and the county, with the county's Board. Association is supposed to speak on the seven independent companies, because it's very difficult for the Board of Supervisors to have seven conversations happening, and the association can bring that to come and to a common point. We know in practice that's very difficult.
So I wonder if it would facilitate things to have a centralized commander in chief, that would kind of be the ultimate authority to segue through us and the different departments. And also, there's a big difference between, you know, the fire part of this and EMS part. So, I mean, all our combination doing is great for the job, but it seems like, you know, it's a lot easier to cover the fires than it is to cover, you know, the EMS part. Maybe we should tackle that, I should, I want to tackle that question.
The EMS, of course, is the primary target right now. And I certainly intend for the new hire to be the liaison. It's a much different discussion than something that will probably have to get worked into the agreement, to think that there's command and control, and the chief of chiefs or something like that. I think that becomes very problematic when the local government is prescribing those, that command and control upon certain independent corporations in exchange for funding.
It's tricky personality.
I think liaison would work much better with a full-time person, and much more engaged of liaison than what we're able to do with only part-time.
And I know one of the other conversations that has come up is, you know, can the new hire also pursue more grant opportunities? Like the safer grants, which I know Mr. Frazier brings up frequently at the Public Safety Committee meetings, that help us offset some of the costs of paid personnel.
They also have recruitment and retention programs for volunteers, but, I mean, it isn't happening. I think when I first learned about it three or four years ago, everybody always, when you said safer grant, everyone would always tell me about how they were meant to get you started with paid. Nobody ever mentioned the other, so I just went to the website and started looking at it, and the, you know, there's safer grants for retention and recruitment of volunteers. It's not always one, it's an either-or. Or it could be both, in maybe our case. But we have to check into it, and frankly, I've never written a grant request, and I would have thought by now somebody else might have done it, but it's one of those old sayings where anybody could have done it, everybody thought somebody was going to do it, but nobody did.
Well, I guess that begs the question, if we think it's a worthwhile thing to do, if we know somebody that can write grants, do we ask somebody to just go ahead and take it on?
I think we should, I think, but I don't know who that person should be. I mean, mostly, some of our volunteer companies have received grants when they, you know, applied for, but this is, this is something different, this is for every one of them.
Well, I don't mean to volunteer people, well, she wouldn't be volunteered if she be paid, but.
Who's not here today? Maybe we can volunteer.
Well, it doesn't say if you don't come to the meeting, you never know what's going to happen. I know, I know Mr. Curry had, I reached out to Brenda Garten when I suggested that maybe she was someone that could help us get caught up on a minute, and Ms. Garten, if I'm not mistaken, has extensive grant writing background, and maybe somebody that could take on some of this while we're in this intermediate period between, you know, not having an emergency coordinator.
Yeah, it's possible. I would, I would not want to get ahead of that new hire, and I think we're going to want that person to come in with fresh eyes, view the situation, identify potential grant resources that fit our situation and what may be needed, understand the strings that come along with those, those grants, explain that to the Board and the community. As something was mentioned earlier, it's not often that money just comes along without a string angling on. And speaking of, it doesn't totally fit in, there is a grant open right now for emergency management that could potentially help us get generator for the shelter, AKA high school. And so that's something that is on my list right now to see if we can muster the effort to get something put in, but we wouldn't do that without first coming to the Board and making sure you know what, what the strings are. It may be twenty, it might be financial, or likely something else. Our hands are tied for some period of time that we can or can't do this.
I'll just say upfront, this has been something that the Public Safety Committee has talked about for, I think, the duration of the time that I've been on the committee, Mr. Frazier, and maybe before, is how to get that work done at the high school.
We have a design open right now, and it's, and it's kind of on the side, we just about wrapped up, so that was the entry point to deal with all of the grants. I'm going to reach out to the E.D.N. Regional Coordinator and ask if he thought this was a good candidate, and say he thought it was, and we should go ahead and work with everything.
Well, I think we should do it. I don't know if you need a motion from the Board. I mean, we have a representative from the schools here today, and he says it's a generator at the school for our resource levels.
I don't know the financial commitment, it could be fifty, fifty, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars per second. I want to make sure we get our arms around exactly what. I want to make sure we get our arms around exactly what the task is even for. Of course, you can authorize me to make a few. I want to make sure we provide what I...
Well, we put a bunch of CARE Act money in the schools. And the schools are giving us back quite a bit of money. Is that number still tracking, Dr. Grimsley?
Close.
That'll be wrapped up. You'll have to get on it shortly.
Well, I think that's a very worthwhile expenditure. And I think it would still on paper, people are thinking that their shelter was up to snuff. I know this is maybe used to a lot of board members. We can have further discussions about it. Hasn't there any other stuff? Doesn't that matter? All right. That takes us on to the FY 2022 budget development calendar. Mr. Curry?
Yes, just if you ask that this be placed on the agenda to entry into your calendar moving into the next fiscal year budget development process, which seems impossible that we're here. I've attached to the agenda the FY '21 budget calendar. And we thought that we would likely start with that. And the biggest point that I'm not sure about is the number and timing of what meetings that may happen with the school. We had a plan to have joint meetings with the school for FY '21, and then March happened. Do you have any recommendations? So certainly welcome to take any input. I will plan to bring the calendar back at the December meeting for approval. And we'll need the board input, changes that even happen. Obviously, the days, the dates will happen as the calendar changes. But structural changes on how you want to see the process done different from the last couple of years.
Is there any feedback from the board on this?
I think this is a great idea. That we get to look at it maybe easier to read.
I think everyone knows how I feel about joint meetings. I think they're incredibly healthy exercise. It seems to put us all behind the table instead of some of us on one side and some of us on the other. So, and I did hear from the chairman of the school board today, he has a concern. And I think it's about, I know it's about a concern that with COVID, it may not be a good idea for us to have a joint meeting. But I'd rather have the meeting scheduled and possibly be able to do it than not schedule the meeting and miss an opportunity. So I'd like to keep the joint meetings in place. And should situations change, we can make those adjustments as they arise.
So the schedule is attached. For FY '21, we had a February 11 joint meeting with the school board. So that would be before Dr. Grimsley finalizes her budget. Obviously, well, before I finalize my budget. And with these coordination and potential direction to each of us as to what the boards would like to see in the budget or not see in the budget. If there was, there will be no tax increase, make it work. Or we want to make sure there's a certain amount of salary or compensation, the studies or whatever implemented, find a way to make that work. That's the sort of direction, the high-level direction that would be helpful to us early on as we're preparing documents for a balanced budget for introduction. And then you could have another meeting, joint meeting later in the process after budgets are more worked out. And then you're in the mode of trying to spread all those dollars to all the needing, needing groups in the right way to hear from the school board on why their budget, as they prepared it and proposed it, is critical. And that's another time when it may make sense for the two groups to meet. That's not on the calendar.
I'm content with the way it is. I don't know how the other members feel.
I'm fine, and I like the joint meetings whenever we can make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, for pulling this together. That takes us to the memorandum agreement with RRRC for the CARE Act Small Business Program. Mr. Curry?
As board members recall, it's not possible for the board supervisors to invest directly in private businesses that have received goods or services in exchange. The CARE Act has the intention of being able to support small business and the board allocated funds for that purpose. The way that many of the candidates are handling that is by using economic development for a leader industrial company to be that middle party. We don't have that. And so the regional commission, the planning district commission, has agreed to fill that role for us. There's a very simple MOA attached to the agenda. Mr. Goff has reviewed it and is prepared to sign and approve it as to form. In exchange for the services rendered by the commission, they will be paid 0.5%, $450 of the full amount. I don't know, but Trace is not still here. But there is a letter that I got from Business of Rappahannock, and they're actually going to pay the administrative fee for regional commission, CIC, and make up the difference for the little bit of advertising that the board did pay for directly. So the full amount of $90,000 will end up being released through these grants, not produced. The MOA states it's 86, 750, 850. And that is how much the board would send to RRRC, and BOR would send to DMS.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Any discussion or motions in regard to this agenda item?
I would like authorization to have me execute this agreement.
Well, I'll go ahead and kick it off then and make a motion that we're authorized to execute the agreement that touched on the packet today.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us on to the broadband authority review and consideration. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Curry, or county attorney, as explanation is needed.
He went for a small business. Board members are aware from your last meeting that there's a discussion from the broadband committee and recommendation that the board move forward to forming a broadband authority. And for very similar reasons to the discussion just had provided money for small business grants. The county is not positioned to, Code of Virginia, to provide financial incentives to a local broadband provider or provide broadband services ourselves. But you can do that through broadband authority. Provide those services yourself through broadband authority, and you can invest in one through EDA. So it's the recommendation of the broadband committee to form a broadband authority. That requires a resolution of incorporation. And that can only be adopted after a public hearing that's been noticed for 30 days. A copy of that resolution and articles of incorporation are attached to board docs, as is the draft public hearing. There are, you know, real consequences to forming a new independent public body in the county, much like the Rec Authority or the Water and Sewer Authority. And they do have the right under Code of Virginia to issue revenue laws. And the Code of Virginia is very clear, however, that those cannot incur a financial debt upon account. Whether the citizens understand that distinction, if things don't work out right, that remains to be seen. But Mr. Goff and I prepared this largely on the shoulders of Ms. Bond, who did all the labor. And we're very thankful to her, through the broadband committee, to get this ready for consideration for.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And I would just look to my fellow board members for thoughts. Ms. Donahue, I hate to put you on the spot, but since you've just heard all the broadband committees, I think I have some suggestions.
I would say that the grants tends to be the biggest benefit, in my mind, for a authority. There are, there's a lot of money out there right now, both state and federal. And we have talked to many businesses that are providers that were unable to win the grants because they didn't really have partnerships with anybody. So this would allow us to become the authority to have a relationship with whomever, whatever company wants to go forward to try and receive grant funds. And we could work together and hopefully subsidize a considerable amount of the cost for the goal, which still, for the broadband committee, is a 95% coverage in the county. That, we, I think, all know, unless RRC does end up moving forward, is very unlikely to be fiber to the home for most people, for a lot of citizens of Rappahannock County. But to me, I hear the concern about having an authority and a separate entity and all the things you've got to worry about. But I think the funds that are out there are too enticing to leave behind and receive them.
Ms. Fraser, did you have?
Yeah, excuse me. Mr. Whitson and myself, we met as the rules committee and reviewed these documents as well. And it was our desire, because I'd had several members of the public speak about their concern about a separate taxing or debt service authority in the county. But I guess this, what we have written up here by Mr. Goff, Mr. Curry, and Ms. Bond, they all participated in it. But I guess it's the best we can do under the circumstances. To follow up with Ms. Donahue said, I guess, the ability to go after grants doesn't make us have to apply for them. We just can't apply for what we have, you know, to work with now. But maybe it's just another tool in the toolbox. I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Mr. Whitson?
Well, as I said, Mr. Fraser said, he and I reviewed this with Mr. Curry and thank you, Ms. Bond, for attending.
They did that we can get the ad in this week's paper. It's normally the case, but with elections, it could be wrong. I'm going to reach out and check it. If we can't get it in this week's paper in 30 days, wouldn't allow a consideration after December meeting. The board gets it later meeting, but I would have to, have to know when the public hearing is going to be. So I can proceed if we vote and authorize advertisement is requested. I can proceed as noted and do everything we can to get it in the paper this week.
Well, I guess, would you be able to find out by the evening session what Monday the gym is available at the elementary school? Or do you know that information last year? I know we know by November we're all clear, but I don't know about December.
The last I heard was that December is starting to get into the sports season. So that could be October 24th. We could go to a daily, I suppose. If you're going to do something like this, I would not want to change the newspaper that you normally advertise in, or people would normally watch to see what's happening.
Well, we could do it here in courtroom one of March evening. I mean, I don't think we would be an overflow capacity here. I don't know that we would need the, let's just say, if the comp plan still hasn't been adopted. But then if we have to do a meeting that addresses both, we might overflow the space. But we could do it here, go ahead and just schedule it for here at the courthouse for...
For the 7th?
You know, you know my thoughts about holidays and winter weather is it's a good thing to get business done early.
And I know it is if we have to go, the following week to go to the 14th.
Well, the 7th is our normal meeting. Our normal meeting is as late as it can be for December. And what I have just understood is that we may not make the normal December meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Curry?
I will send out another inquiry and maybe I can get you confirmation about tonight.
And I would just say, if our regular meeting's on the 7th, if we're going to have a second meeting in December, I would want it to be on the 14th. Because then the following week is Christmas weekend. Things get very complicated. Do you need any, any motions or actions from us to take this forward at this time, Mr. Curry?
Yes, I would like a motion to authorize me to place the ad for this resolution as pretty goodly as the act has shown. And you can do that, and if we can get it in this paper, we will. And if not, perhaps you will readdress this decision.
Could we make that motion with the second date in line?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to, to, we have to give Mr. Curry a repeat rate this...
But anyway.
Or the follow-up date of December 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Parrish, did you want to be on the staff? I mean, I put you on the spot, but I was, my understanding that we're all specifically named.
It's set up to appoint members and immediately, if desired, to present and replace with non-board members.
Very good.
No more than, although always be at least three seats for the board supervisor.
Very good. Thank you so much. But thank you to the rules committee and Mr. Goff for your work. And Mr. Curry, everyone from the board. It's funny, we talk about disbanding groups, but yet we're forming another group, which I guess leads to the conversation in the course of forming the authority. Do we need to start to disband the broadband committee?
We, I, you should. It must get through the public hearing. But at that point in time, the authority can create any number of committees. I think you have incorporated the Health and Division. And they'll need to start to think about bylaws and how are they going to actually run that at bottom.
Let's take a brief recess, about 10 minutes, and we can get to our talk.
Shannon, I like your glasses. Your glasses are cool.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
To work together with the volunteer fire company during that, this next part of the fiscal year to determine what should happen in the future. And is one paid provider enough? Should there be more? Should the structure be different? And that is the current plan. I can't tell you how the Warren County Board of Supervisors will vote on November 4th, but those members that were in attendance at their work session, it was attended by myself, Ms. Donna Hay, Chief Brown, and Mr. Williams, seemed to be supportive. If we can have our neighbors help us fund this, that's good. I think it's dangerous to get too wrapped in the details of how many calls are being run where. Although there is, that was the rationale used with Warren to suggest that 50% may be a reasonable number. And that's because what we pay for with fire and EMS is much like we pay at our home for our insurance, it's the opportunity to have service, not necessarily the service itself. We hope we never use Chester Gap for any EMS calls. That would be wonderful. But the fact that they're there is very valuable and as well as the rest of our providers. So if they ran every single call in Warren County and was still available to come here but was never needed, that would be fantastic. And the fact that it was 49 calls to one or zero doesn't mean that we should pay 2% of the cost because we have that valued asset at the ready. So that's my input on the numbers. I don't know about the specifics of the numbers. We could certainly go back and look. It's all in the records.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Ms. Donna Hay?
Yep. If I may, I just made some notes so that everybody knows where we are and how we got here and all that good stuff. In March, Harold Bebaut, the head of the association, wrote, "We can't afford to delay preparing for paid providers." It was becoming obvious that some key individuals in the county that have been wonderful volunteers were starting to either leave the county or decide that they really couldn't continue to run as many calls as they have been. And then in March, late March, COVID hit us. And Chief Brown will tell you the story. He had about five volunteers that were EMTs that basically for one reason or another, a lot of them lived with their parents still or seniors that they didn't feel safe taking a potential COVID home to the loved ones. So he, in probably four days maybe, came up with a solution to ensure that, and I didn't realize this, there's over 288 homes in Chester Gap and over 800 citizens, Rappahannock citizens up in that area. And he didn't want to leave Rappahannock citizens without any type of coverage. And to get up to Chester Gap even from Flint Hill, Griffin Tavern is still a 15-minute drive. So it's not like it's really simple, somebody else can cover it, don't worry about it kind of thing. Also, in September, the Fire Association asked for the county to supplement rescue with paid staff. They finally had hit what they called their trigger concerns about being able to make their call time because they have set goals, and I believe it's 25 minutes to actually get to a resident. And they were worried they were not going to be able to make that much longer. So the association has the service level agreement that have those performance standards. And I can tell you, our volunteers take them very seriously. And when they get together in fire levy board meetings or whatever, they're all, you know, we are making our percentages or we're not. And I really appreciate what they're doing. The chiefs through the association agreement have the ability to decide, and this, I think, is some of what the conversation that's going on right now, to work together with other, each company can decide, like if one and seven, which is Washington and Sperryville Rescue, decide they can cover their area, they can come up with that agreement on their own. And I think the county would be very excited to see a lot of those kind of agreements where they're helping each other out, not just when the call happens, but they're prepared to go on that call from Little Washington or from Sperryville, knowing that they've got the coverage. So that kind of stuff is still going on, but Chief Brown took action, and I think is a very strong leader up there, and said, "I can't wait to hopefully have coverage figured out down the road. I've got all these folks I've got to take care of, and yes, I do run calls in Warren County." So they've got a committee that went around to look at what other places, other companies were doing in other counties because there is a very serious concern that once you start paying folks to run calls, the volunteers start going, "Why should I get up at 2:00 in the morning?" And we don't want to get to that point. We want to make sure that the volunteers feel like they're still loved. And I'm really hoping this new person that we will hire full-time understands that volunteers are extremely important to this community and we can't afford to go 100% paid. And the fire levy board, what happens is the chiefs send us the analysis of what each station spent, operational expenses only, after they have the chief's meeting that reviews it. That information is sent to the fire levy board. And at that point, I truly feel like I'm an auditor because we're going line by line comparing what Chester Gap is doing with Flint Hill or whatever, or what they've done over the previous six months or years to make sure that the monies that we are collecting from our citizens are being used appropriately. And I think that process, although it's grueling, is very good. And I can tell you that this last fire levy board submission from Chester Gap, they received $66,344.18 from the fire levy funds. All of that information, I believe, is on board docs. If you go to fire levy, you can, we normally have our meetings in January and June, I think it is, to actually do some, July for the submissions. Every county, I mean, every station, what they received. The agreement with Warren County and Chester Gap started in 2016. And that was an agreement that that board unanimously agreed on is actually instead of a mutual, mutual, what's it called?
Aid.
Right. Instead of mutual aid, it's actually an automatic aid with Warren County. Now, that just means that they've got a first due basically on the other side of Chester Gap, and it goes all the way to the road that the 4-H Center is on. That's their entire first due for Warren County. So it's not like they're going to someplace far in Warren County. That agreement says that Warren County will give a check to Chester Gap for capital expenses of no less than $39,500. And it's all based on a formula. And the formula starts out, which I think is what this number that Mr. Mackler had comes from, the formula starts at $64,602 for every station that Chester Gap, or that Warren County has, their stations in Warren County get this $64,602. Chester Gap does not. What Chester Gap gets is a formula based on numbers of calls, times that $64,602, and then they get a check for whatever that dollar figure ends up being. They will not get less than $39,500, and that money goes towards their capital expenses. The fire levy board is operational. What they get from Warren goes into the big dollar items. And right now, I can tell you, they used in the beginning, when COVID hit and he decided to go with the paid EMTs, he had to take money out of his bank account until they received the Warren County check. And he was using that Warren County check to pay for the EMTs until our board voted to approve the CARES fundings for him. So that, the money, if he hadn't had that coming from Warren County, would have been an issue to do what he did. We have what seems to be, and I'm very happy about it, a very strong relationship with Warren County. They truly do understand and appreciate everything Chester Gap is doing for the citizens of Warren County. They understand that they're running on their side of the hill. And I did ask the question to Mr. Brown, how do you decide if you get a call at the same time, what are you going to do? And the answer I got was, you basically triage the call. So if somebody's got a stubbed toe and somebody's got a heart attack, they're going on the heart attack. And the second due will go to the stubbed toe. That makes sense. Yes, you can get into the battle of what if you have two heart attacks. But I just think the way it's been working since 2016 has been very good. COVID and lack of volunteers and everything else has really highlighted this for Rappahannock County. And I can tell you that dispatch knows that if first due, second due, third due are toned out and they're not showing up, they know they can go to Chester Gap because they've got somebody there 24/7. Yes, very, very cautious about not just toning out Chester Gap because we want to keep our volunteers at all the other stations. So I personally believe the relationship we have with Warren County is great. I believe what Chief Brown has done is important and has protected the citizens of Wakefield District and beyond because they do go beyond if needed. And I think the six months that Warren County is committing to in fiscal year, the end of fiscal year 2021, makes sense. It gives us six months, if we agree with what they're doing, it gives us six months to try to figure out with the chiefs and the association and the new full-time hire, we'll have that six months of coverage to make the call on what's going to be next. And Warren County may come back and offer, you know, they want to do more, that's possible, but we're not talking that. We want to figure out what we're really trying to do in the county now and through the next six months, and then we can make that decision. Sorry, that was long-winded, but I thought it was very important that everybody knew the steps.
Did she have a few minutes?
I hope he got it all.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, really. Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions?
I had a few questions. This might be for Mr. Curry. Mr. Mackler mentioned in his public comments about this question of whether it's appropriate for county, I guess county representatives to be negotiating on behalf of a company like Chester Gap. I mean, is, based on your past experience and knowledge of any kind of applicable restrictions on, I mean, is that a valid concern?
Well, I think Chester Gap should be advocating on their own, and they have been.
Yeah.
I'm advocating on behalf of Rappahannock and its citizens to reduce our expenditure. So to the extent that there is a known cost and we can share that expense with Warren, that it fits us. But Warren County's agreement is not with Rappahannock County.
Right.
With Chester Gap. And Chester Gap has to be okay with that and what the responsibility, of course, they've already signed the automatic aid agreement, which already defines the rules and engagement of when they're going to respond, what they're going to respond with and all that. This is really just a way to get some funding. And it's a commitment, well, it says agreement, it's a commitment from the Board of Supervisors to fund a certain amount of money.
And then another question that came to mind, I understand there's this Good Samaritan Volunteer Firefighter Act, I guess 2004, that protects volunteers against liability. Is there any liability presented by Rappahannock County paid?
Well, I don't want to overstep Mr. Goff, but- People go to our ordinance. RE makes clear that these fire companies are an instrumentality of the county. And as such, they enjoy sovereign immunity just like if it was an EMS department with a Rappahannock badge on their shoulder.
Could I interject there for a second? I believe Mr. Goff told us some time back that there's also something else besides this sovereign immunity, and it may be because I simply forgot or don't understand, but the sovereign immunity is one thing, but it's something that they can't even file a lawsuit?
I think that's what that might be referring to.
You had a technical term for, I really, I'm really sorry to bring it up on some spot.
Does it have to do with firefighters or?
I don't know if firefighters and EMS were one or the other, but you had a legal term for it that I don't know whether it is a mentality protected by the sovereign immunity, but it was like the clerk couldn't even take a lawsuit against him for this purpose. And I'm sorry to just break on that.
Not bubbling up right this minute, but I'll take a little look at it. It is true, though, that it's quite clear that the enabling legislation for the EMS department, whether it's county department or volunteers or MITS, is protected by sovereign immunity, that they are instrumentalities, but it doesn't matter whether they're volunteer paid. So it'd be very difficult type of thing to bring a negligence action against any one of them individually, let alone to join the county in the absence of direct supervisory control over them. So I'd say the risk of lawsuits of these types of cases are somewhat slim. And I'll try to find if there's another doctrine, but I would hang my hat on sovereign immunity as being the biggest protection in this.
So to be clear, if we have paid people going over to Warren County, your conclusion is it's not an issue?
Right.
I mean, from a liability perspective.
I don't think there's much risk of liability at all.
Okay. And my last question was just on operational expenses. And maybe Ms. Donna Hay, you can answer that. Has there been any discussion with Warren County? We're paying 100% of Chester Gap's operational expenses, but we're doing half the calls approximately over the other side. So right now, Rappahannock County taxpayers are covering their operational expenses. Is Warren County possibly, as a next step in your ongoing discussions, going to step up in this regard? And would that work based on your discussions with them?
I guess it's too soon to tell. But if this board wanted to continue that form of conversation with Warren County, they have been very open to discussing. And my peer on the other side, Supervisor Cullors, has been meeting with Chief Brown directly. So I don't know, bottom line, I don't know the answer, but I know they are open to trying to make sure citizens on both sides are taken care of.
Okay. Thanks for all your work on this.
Do we know the percentages of reciprocity? You know, I think we approximately do for how much we respond over on their side. But with the automatic aid, I would think they'd be also responding on our side.
That's a good question.
They do.
So I don't really want to get into the situation where we're talking about funding their operational expenses.
Right.
If we have a good, a well-weighted system.
They don't have a first due in Rappahannock, but they provide ALS when we need it, whenever we call. And that's essentially mutual aid. And so if we need it and they're available, they will come.
Well, and I know that they have been over and above, too, most recently lending us an ambulance when the Chester Gap ambulance was in the shop for an extended period. They were very confident and loaned us one.
So maybe don't undermine the goodwill we already have.
I mean, I think it's all, any money that we can have flowing into the county is always a good idea, but I just would ask that question before because we might not like the answer.
Fair point.
Right. With them having ALS at that end, because I think our first ALS person is probably at Little Washington, at Washington, if that person is there. And then the next one, I think, is Amosville. So for someone, especially in the Wakefield District, having that relationship is very important. Mr. Goff, you said something about Line of Duty Act, and I don't remember.
Line of Duty Act, yeah, that's a statutory requirement for all our first responders, including law enforcement. And we pay a pretty heavy premium to our insurance every year for Line of Duty. That covers people who are hurt while they're doing their job. Their first responder also protects, you know, the families of those who are who are deceased in the Line of Duty. So that's what I mentioned this morning when we had our conversations, that that's an area of coverage that we're already paying for.
And that was one of the line items when the board compared the Versa and Bay Corp Insurance. LODO was one of those. And in my office, we reach out to all the companies, find out their numbers, and get the exact number of who's making calls and who's not, and making sure we ensure the right number of volunteers. And there are a lot of them on our list.
Does the fire levy board put together any sort of document like this, this one that Mr. Mackler handed us, like a cost per call? I don't mean to put you on the spot about it, Ms. Donna Hay, but they are interesting numbers to think about.
Definitely. And I know, and Mr. Glennie, unfortunately, I can't, I guess, ask you for your assistance, but.
Look, the chair recognizes if you can.
Okay. I know in the past, the discussions for, with the fire levy board is, you don't really look at a call that way. You can't say that Chester Gap's $200 versus Washington's $175 is equal, depending on the situation and that kind of thing. And that's where Mr. Glennie's past history can help us. The one thing that is, anybody that looks on the fire levy board, if you look at Sperryville, you're going to go, wow, they're golden. But you have two stations technically in Sperryville. You've got the fire, and then you've got the rescue, and they both get operational expenses. So you've just got to make sure you're looking apples to apples in all situations.
Of course, these numbers include the $30,700 for the paid staff.
But also, Amosville did receive CARES Act funding.
They did. They just haven't received the check yet.
Okay.
And that's $54,000, $50,000, something like that.
Okay.
Yes, your question, yes, I do appreciate from town, but can we solve it? The cost per average, all right, as Donna Hay was pointing out, if you do it overall, it's not a fair comparison for a number of different reasons. Where I tend to use that analysis in the fire, the results, the subject things, you know, things that are more constant, like cutting grass or electric buildings or the field that we focus on is the amount of, is the fuel cost, all right, and how they get the fuel. So we do look at that, we've talked about it, but the specific answer to your question is we know it's not the cost that we put out. Paige's fascination with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Glennie. I just want to thank you and Mr. Curry, Chief Brown, and Mr. Bebaut for your work to bring this forward. Ms. Donna Hay, I think anytime we can have a better relationship with our neighbors, neighboring counties is a good thing. And it just makes me wonder if there's not maybe similar opportunities. I don't know to what extent local companies have been helping with all the rescues in the park lately.
Yeah, that's good.
But I know it's been, some of the facilities have been staging grounds in the past. And with the new superintendent coming in, do we receive any sort of?
We receive approximately $87,000 for payment in lieu of taxes from the federal government.
Okay.
I remember when it was '24.
But the horse and wagon didn't cost as much as fire truck.
Ouch.
That was in the late '90s. Actually, we didn't receive any more money until Frank Wolf was our congressman. I think he bumped it up, got it bumped up the first time.
Well, that's been a while then, since it's been bumped up, hasn't it?
I believe so. I mean, you know, a large bump, yes. It was probably incremental, but.
We were part of a class action that demanded our appropriate share after the government shorted us for a couple of years, and we got a couple thousand dollars for that, I think, last year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Takes us to.
I don't know, is there intended to be action? And if there is, would it be contingent on action of the Warren County Board?
Does anyone want to make any?
I would like to make a motion, if you don't mind.
Go for it.
That we move, or I move that we stand with Warren County and approve the same motion that they're looking at for their November 4th meeting. If they do not approve their motion, ours should be resubmit.
Thank you, Ms. Donna Hay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That takes us to the board committee reports. I'm going to jump through these pretty quickly. Building Committee.
Hopefully, we'll start getting back on track. We actually tried this this past month with the Rules Committee, but the Building Committee didn't meet.
Broadband Committee, I think we've heard pretty extensively. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Don? RC RFA, Mr. Woodson?
Robert, do you have anything you want to mention about recent activity on the RC RFA Board? If you wouldn't mind. You're super active, and thank you for that.
What I do know is that they're planning to go ahead with approval for contractor for the term of bills for the ancestral restroom that's made progress. I'm working on figuring for the privacy fence that we're going to put up in racing engineering back in October 15, did a survey, and we got it marked. For whatever reason, gentleman's agreement, otherwise, the existing fence of the board's property ended up on their side of the property. So it's a matter of getting it.
Of course, that fence is on their side of the property on the run heading back from the entrance, but it's on our side of the property in the back.
That's correct. That's correct.
After it turns a 90 degree. So I guess, you know, average, it's right.
On proper property, once you put that corner, you go to that corner down the river, it's on our side. That's going to be a question of what we decide to do with it, and that's not exactly. But the most immediate part is getting the side that is on their side, and then be done with the other.
Thank you, Mr. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Woodson. I appreciate, I know that's a big undertaking in terms of the survey and work on those fences.
Yeah, Robert's really done a great job, and I know you led the charge to appoint him. Thank you. Because he's a go-getter, so that's great.
That will likely be an item that comes back to the board for funding.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Robert. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Public Safety Committee. I feel like I've talked way too much, Mr. Fraser. Did you want to give an update on the Public Safety Committee?
I'm not sure anybody wants to hear me any more than they do you, but, thank you, Madam Chair. We did meet last week, and there were several points of discussion, but I guess the largest point of discussion is, where do we go? What do we do with the Public Safety Committee? It seems to have a purpose, but we're not getting a lot of involvement from all the stakeholders, all the, you know, appointees of it, all the members. And I think that, you know, going forward into the next year, that we, this board, give that some consideration, you know, whoever the board's appointees are from this body, that they really look at trying to get involvement from all the stakeholders. Because there's quite a bit of good that we could do, and I think the public likes to attend those. We have some interaction with the Fire and Rescue Association. It's been a very long time since the sheriff's office has been represented there. And I really think that the sheriff is going to make this last one, but something came up at the last minute. So it's, it was just unfortunate because I think that it would have been, served a very good purpose if more of us could meet. So that's, I guess, our recommendation from the Public Safety Committee members that did meet, that somehow we try to look forward to making a more interactive committee.
I would just agree with that. And I wasn't familiar with some of the things the committee had done in the past. Apparently, it had met in a luncheon format, and food always helps meetings.
I think I spoke about that. I kind of miss those days.
So, you know, we may switch to something like a luncheon and also look at having speakers on specific topics and figure out how to get additional interest in the committee. We decided it was not a good time to disband with everything going on with EMS and possible recommendations being needed. And also in light of the fact that the website is being retooled and should have, will it be a button, Gary?
Citizen input.
Yeah.
Opportunity.
Yeah, user interface where you can report things that may generate more things that we will need to deal with as a committee. So we're going to look at ways to reinvigorated in the new year and carry on. And we're on standby for a special meeting if an opinion's needed on paid personnel.
The new staff person that we hired, I think, should be the staff liaison to this committee and would be charged with finding ways to get it reinvigorated, finding speakers, finding topics, bringing relevant topics to the body so that that body can inform- speakers, finding topics, bringing relevant topics to the body so that that body can inform this body.
Yeah, one, one of the meetings, one of the very, very beginning, I think we met at what, what was later the Public House, I don't know what it was called in the first days, but we had a lunch meeting there and we had the State Trooper Sergeant from the Warranton Office there that basically explained to us what their role was in Rappahannock County. And I think at that time, we had two or three state, you know, troopers that patrolled Rappahannock. And I didn't know it until then, and I don't know if it's any different now, but those deputy, those troopers at that time were patrolling from the Stafford County line with Falkir all the way to the top of 211 at Thornton Gap.
Wow.
That was their, and we didn't know that, so we wondered why we didn't see them sometimes. But I, I think that's probably changed, but I mean, that answered a question that we had, why don't we see them as, as much as we'd like to? And that was the reason, they were stretched pretty thin.
I think there's opportunity to engage the Department of Health too with the pandemic, maybe have Dr. Karchner join us or Gary Thudell may be willing to come talk to us. So I think there's, there's good work to do there. Maybe we should not look a gift horse in the mouth, but no news has been good news and we haven't been needed more, but if we're going to continue to meet, I think we need to, to refine our purpose a little bit better. Rules Committee.
Again, maybe Mr. Woodson would like to.
No, please go ahead.
Well, we, we met and we just looked over the, the draft, the documents that Ms. Bond had put together and that Mr. Golf and Mr. Curry had looked over and had, you know, our, our input on it. And I, I think that that was at least incorporated in the final, the final documents that the Board just approved.
And I'm afraid the Planning Commission update, maybe you also, Mr. Fraser?
Do I have to?
Or we can just do that tonight when we have a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Fire Levy Board would be the last.
I think we've probably talked it until we're blue in the face as well. We had a really good meeting and our next one is December 9th, I believe, at 6 o'clock at Company 5.
I don't mean to be insensitive in asking this, but with the sudden passing of Ms. Philby, is, is there anything to preclude me from attending those meetings? As long as there's not too many supervisors there, we should be okay? Otherwise, I would.
So the Charter states that the selection is yours to make. I suppose you can select yourself and so long as we don't have more Board members participating, I think you're okay.
I, I do know, I do intend to make an appointee and I, we should advertise, but I don't want to not have representation at some critical meetings I know are coming up.
Yeah, because there's only one Board member on that body, I think you're okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Treasurers Reports. If there's no other further discussion, take it to Treasurers Reports. Mr. Curry?
I'll just ask you to look at the two sets of pretty pictures. The cash flow graph, you can see the impact of the CARES Act dollars and the early revenue collections. If you dig into the revenues side, you can see, I think Ms. Donahue and I looked the other day, it was $400,000 extra real estate tax revenue than what we saw this time last year. That'll eventually catch up to itself, but all in all, it's, the cash side looks good. The other charts that I attached, I think, are interesting to review. Look at the meals and lodging tax revenues, it's come in over time. You can see the multi bars or the different fiscal years and then it's by quarter. So for meals and lodging, the first quarter of when the dollars were received, and this is not when the dollars will hit our accounting system because they will be accrued back because they were for a prior period, they just happened to come in there, but that gets confusing. But at any rate, we were, you know, maybe half, and that's due to COVID. This most recent quarter that closed, we're on par with the last year, which maybe is surprising, maybe is not surprising. And we'll see what happens next quarter. There's no guarantee that we'll stay right there. There's obviously been a big push for people coming out to the park. They have been overwhelmed and we have seen some of that. Not affected by the park, I think, is sales tax revenue, which you can see the story play out year after year, continues to rise. And this is particularly impacted by the fact that we are now capturing online sales, sales tax. And we recall during the budget process for both of these revenue sources, the Board of Supervisors very cautiously set very low budgets, thinking that revenue would be impacted. And for sales tax, we're exceeding last year and we budgeted much less than last year. So we'll see if that continues on as well. So that is good and in the coming months, the Board should begin to have considerations of how to handle those dollars that you froze in the budget. Should they be thawed and be put to use as previously intended or some new intended purpose?
I did want to talk about that a little bit today because it is, it is my recollection that we froze some dollars for the express purpose of pay increases on the county side. That's part of what we froze?
No. So there, we did freeze the 2% bonus that was in the state budget, but then was un allotted from the state budget and then taken out of the state budget and now the state budget may include $500 bonus for law enforcement. So we'll have to see what happens when, when they finish. That's not in the budget right now, but that would be fully funded for the, from the state for state supported positions. The county's classification compensation was taken out of the budget and basically the funding for paid EMS came from that because the Board chose to do that rather than contemplate any sort of tax increase for the fire levy tax or for the general tax. So there is no money in the budget. There was some money in the budget for school salary increases, that was frozen.
Okay. But they're moving forward with that on that side?
They did something, I'm not sure what, but they don't have the revenue from the Board.
Any other discussion or thoughts?
We've said it again, but thanks to the Treasurer and the Revenue Commissioner for getting the bills, bills out early and it's incredible and thanks to Mr. Curry for directing that, really paid off.
We did add a signer, was it the state, Virginia State Tax?
Yes, Treasurer of Virginia. From time to time, we have to send money back to the state for various things and that has recently been added to the list of vendors that can be paid mid-month. Of all of our vendors, they have some of the worst terms and are least flexible. So when they ask for money, we would like to give it to them.
Get it paid quickly with no penalty.
What are their payment terms?
None and 10%.
Oh, like. So upon receipt and penalized immediately, basically?
I'm not sure when, but.
Okay. Can that be, that's just the way it is?
Yeah, and most of the time, if we don't pay them, they'll just withhold other money that's supposed to come to us.
They have a way of getting our attention.
So it takes us to the review of legal matters. I don't know if anyone has any discussion or thoughts that we bring forward in this meeting on this. Otherwise, I think it's just posted so we all have the same information.
I did send a request to Board members regarding the General District Court action with Capielli. Heard back from three Board members, but that's, that's it. I don't know if you want to talk about that now or.
Do you have a consensus?
Do not.
Okay. Well, the two that have not looked at it, I guess, should get back to you. Update on county administrator activities?
Memos are attached for mid-month and end of month or beginning of month report.
Building Permit Report and the zoning administrator report, along with the V.D.A. Monthly Report are also attached in the packet. Does anyone have any questions? Takes us to matters presented by the Board.
I have something, Madam Chair, but I can go last if somebody else has anything.
I don't have anything. Does anyone have anything?
Can I ask you to pass these down, one to each member?
Is this just one page or is that I'm passing along?
Just one for each.
Thank you.
I would like to read this if I could. I have to put my thoughts on paper because my mind wanders at times. It always did that, it's not, has nothing to do with my age or my hairdo. Where to start? At the top. I will try to list my thoughts on the issues of the past week concerning the proposed closed session and subsequent action by members of this Board and others. Chairman Smith, in looking over the draft agenda for today's meeting, asked to have a closed session discussion on the failure of staff to timely post a notice for joint meeting of both the Board and the Planning Commission. Clearly both allowed and at times a necessary function of the Office of Board of Supervisor. I do believe from the training I have had and my own reading of the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711, that Mr. Curry was asking for more than required detail for the motion. The real issues happen when someone at this table went to the local paper and, whether in person or electronically, delivered the email correspondence between the Chair and staff. Then, for reasons that can only be considered as bad intentions or not understanding their roles in local governing, three members of this Board spoke with the local paper, referenced a personnel matter, not good, not helpful, and this now makes every employee or appointee of the County Board to feel their performance will play out in the paper first. I remember, oh, sorry, one member is quoted as dismayed that there was a call for a joint meeting to begin with. The Board Chair, like any other member of this Board, can invite someone with technical knowledge on a subject to attend our meetings. I've yet to see a Rappahannock Board not honor this. The Planning Commission Chair was asked to attend and knowing he was not specifically tasked by the PC to speak for them, and out of respect for the other members of that body, called a special meeting of the Commission. This he has stated. The plan for a joint meeting simply happened, not improperly, not illegally. All these things would be considered normal, normal and perfunctory actions and obligations of the individuals involved, but for some reason that escapes me, it is not considered normal in Rappahannock County. Instead, in Rappahannock County, the Board, in one of the worst cases I have ever seen, and believe me, I know firsthand about members attacking one another publicly and using tax dollars to do so. But members of this Board attacked their colleague and one in particular in a vicious manner. This encouraged other people to pile on, becoming a white collar lynching. An email also went out from a county appointee spreading a blatant lie. We now have appointees politicizing their positions. Will this be allowed to continue? A well-worn saying, elections have consequences, should be coupled with elections have obligations. I for one am very sad to see not only the dysfunction of this Board to continue, but to appear to also reach a new low of juvenile pettiness. Members of this Board, in my opinion, owe not only Ms. Smith and Mr. Curry an apology, but the taxpayers and citizens of the county for their involvement in this fiasco. And something I didn't have in my notes, but I noticed as it progressed here today during public comment, it was partisan. Almost everyone that got up and spoke with improper knowledge of what happened are also members of the local Democrat Committee. For some reason, they were called upon, or it was all orchestrated for them to come here as some sort of support group. That's what I saw. There, almost every one of them works at the polls as an officer of election. You can't dispute that. It was orchestrated by somebody either beforehand or behind the scenes later, after this went out and, and the public pressure started. These aren't in my notes, I'm sorry. It's just what I saw here today. It was partisan. And I'm sorry, I, I've never been involved in anything like that in a Board meeting before, but I saw it unfold here today. Personnel matters should have been kept private.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Does anyone else have anything to say? I'll just reiterate what I said earlier because I think it bears repeating. I saw a problem. It's a process problem. It's a personnel problem. It is not a personality problem. It is not an individual problem. This problem that I thought we should discuss as a Board, and so I put it on the agenda. I tried to do the right thing in my education on FOIA and use some broad terms so that it was clear that that was the discussion that I wanted to have. And when I heard back from our FOIA officer, who happens to be also our county administrator, his suggestion was that it needed to be more specific and his wording named himself. I am not in the interest of targeting individuals, but at the end of the day, I am the Chairman of the Board and the buck stops here. When there is a statutorily required process like FOIA and we are in another statutorily required process like adoption of the comprehensive plan, I want to talk to my peers on the Board. And the only way to properly talk to all of you is in a closed meeting. And so that's, that's really all I have to say about it and I think it's very unfortunate the turns that it took. I can promise you, you will never catch me discussing personnel or leaking personnel information to local newspapers. And you will never catch me talking in the newspaper about you instead of picking up the telephone to talk to you first. And that's all I have to say.
So I'll just say that this is obviously a misunderstanding that got, it took its own course and went, you know, way further than anybody could have ever imagined. Anyway, hopefully it will get us behind us pretty quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Anyone else? All right. That takes us to what the fuss has all been about, the closed meeting to conduct a closed, the motion to conduct a closed meeting. I move that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with 2.1-3711A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of, and this is where I have new language from Mr. Garenhardt, and I've already sent this to you as well, Gary, for the record.
Is it to meet when?
After the meeting started today.
You just referenced 2.1-3711A, it should be 2.2-3711.
Oh, sorry, I misread. And the motion that I wish to make is discussion of performance, demotion, salaries and disciplining of employees acting as FOIA officers for non-performance of FOIA duties. And that is, I think, much more in spirit and letter of my original request for this closed meeting. And I forwarded you all the email from Alan Garenhardt at the Foiler Council, saying he thought that that was a proper motion to make as well. So again, it's 2.2-3711A, closed meeting authorized for certain limited purposes, discussion of performance, demotion, salaries and disciplining of employees acting as FOIA officers for non-performance of FOIA duties.
Mr. Motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you.